Patrick, will you please do a roll call?
Absolutely. Mrs. Montenegro?
Here.
Dr. Diaz?
Here.
Myself, here. Mr. McMillan?
Here.
And this is Clement.
As noted, Mrs. Clement will not be in attendance today. Thank you. Welcome, members of administration, fellow board members, and those joining us in the audience. Uh, thank you for joining us. This is our work session, as mentioned. It will be, uh, pretty low-key and more discussion-based. Uh, can I get a consideration and approval of tonight's agenda?
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Khan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? I would just recommend that possibly we switch the order in which we're gonna do this. If we could do, um, the agenda-setting procedure, policy review first, and then the feasibility study, just so that maybe Mr. Hawkins can get here. Or any questions on the feasibility study? Um, how does the board feel about that?
Sounds good.
Sounds good, too.
Does that work? Is there anything that, that constitutes we cannot do that, Mr. McMillan?
I believe so.
Okay.
Do I need to change my, my motion?
Oh, to amend? Can we do that, or we're just gonna change it?
Can you approve it?
The way it is. We'll just keep it and then we'll just discuss. Since it's open discussion, we'll just discuss it in a different order. Okay, perfect. Perfect. So we have a, a motion and a second. That was discussion. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Okay, so for the first, um, it's review, agenda settings, procedure, and policy. This ties back to a few months ago, actually. Maybe we'll go feasibility study first. Let's do that. Uh, Mr. Hawkins just arrived, 5:36. I mean, he was in his office, obviously, but... You're good. Okay, we were gonna change the order in which we were gonna do the work session, because we weren't sure you were gonna make it, but now we're gonna do feasibility study. We're just gonna go with the way the agenda is. Because questions for the feasibility study may be coming to you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Um, and then the agenda stuff. So, um, scratch all of that. We're gonna go feasibility study. So, in your board packets, you have the presentation that was presented to us last month, um, about the feasibility study. Um, I wanted to give us an opportunity to review it and discuss any parts of it that people would, if they had any further questions, um, in preparation for us to take action. This is even if you don't have questions and you have comments, just anything that I, that you think that would be important for the board to hear, maybe from your, your point of view, since not everyone was at the committee work sessions. If you have questions about the work sessions, just anything that came to mind, this would be your time that we can just have a very open discussion, uh, about the feasibility study. I'll open the floor.
Um, so, two parts. One is, I think, just from a public perspective, not everyone's involved in those meetings. So I would just appreciate, like, the short and skinny breakdown of the final verdict, where we're at now. Because I know there are certain things that we're not talking about in this, but, you know, for instance, there's a lot of assumptions about grade-banding, not grade-banding, all these other things. And I think a lot of this is still undecided, right? So, I just wanna make it, I think this is a good forum for us to make it just very clear, like, what the succinct verdict was, or, or the outcome of, of the feasibility study and those committee meetings. But also, um, just to make it clear that things like that are still in process, right? They're fluid, and we still haven't made decisions on any of that.
Want, want to start, Mr. Hawkins? Or you want me to start, and then you can follow up?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So the recommendation was, um, and again, this was a group of many people, that was presented a ton of data, um, from, uh, capacity, current capacity, projected future capacity, um, possible scenarios for boundary lines. Should we, um, elect to stay with traditional schools? Savings from a cost perspective of, um, what we, what we could potentially save by closing, by the school closures, as well as, uh, savings from the perspective of, um, deferred maintenance, right? There's a ton of that in those schools, too. And so, once all of that data was presented, it became pretty, uh, transparent that we had to make a decision. And there was, there was different scenarios presented where we were closing one school, or closing two schools. There was different scenarios from grade-banding in traditional schools. Then they went to a, a, uh, poll for the whole, um, audience and everyone that was in the feasibility study to vote. Again, that doesn't mean that's something that we have to approve, but the way that the voting went with that group of people was, one, the astounding, thank you, uh, overall, was to close Sixth Street and Jose Barrios. Um, that was an eighty-nine percent, um, agreement of that group of people. Um, and then next was, um, grade-banding. Uh, grade-banding was interesting because they let us get into groups and weigh the pros and cons. And, um, it, again, the people that were in the room, lots of educators, lots of administrators, but also parents. And the first time that we kinda went through it, there was not a ton of parents there. And so, following that first meeting, it, because educators understand how wonderful that is to pool all of your resources, and in, in both stuff and people, and, um, getting the kids together, that's how grade-banding came out way ahead. Um, and then we circled back again in the following meeting, when we did have more parents, talked about it again. And there still seemed to be many parents that understood how great that would be from an education perspective. Um, you and I have talked about, you know, there are challenges with, um, how we're set up, from traffic, from taking kids to various locations. And so, it presents other challenges, right? And so, um, while grade-banding stood out greatly, it's not something, we still made sure that we have another opportunity with setting new boundary lines where we could stick with traditional schools, if we're just not ready to go that route. But I, but in high level, the recommendation was to close Sixth Street and Jose Barrios, to grade-band, and to move sixth grade back to the middle school. And, and I, I wouldn't say that's what we're deciding, right? That was just the prep, that what's presented to us. And then, as we talk with our constituents, right, it was a room of thirty people, but I'm sure you guys are hearing from different people and curious and have their input. Um, that's why I think this conversation is so important to hear. What other things are we hearing, right?
And what I would add, you know, one of the things that I asked when we were in the committee, it, initially, once we saw that the vote was, um, grade-banding with the higher percent, there was a question of why we're still gonna do boundaries. The answer was yes. And one of my comments was, I need you to have boundaries, because if I don't have the opportunity or the ability to truly have a dialogue with our community and getting sense of, yes, this is good, you know, almost a vote, if you will, which I have planned on doing, and getting, and getting feedback. If we don't have, kinda like when we did the, the calendar for the valid calendar, if there's not a high percentage of support that says, you know, we definitely understand the consolidation, but I, I'm not sure I get this grade-banding or whatever, there's, if, then, i-if the support's not there for that, we recognize that if the board makes a decision to consolidate, but we may not be ready to have that dialogue with grade-banding, despite what we think we know to be, uh, a good opportunity for our, our community and for our staff, right? Then you know what? Then we go with the consolidation. We have the districts that, the, the boundaries that are established. Um, based on the data that they provided and demonstrated for us, they showed us how the auto-zone requests currently were, and who had assigned and requested between Harrison and in Stout. And so, looking at if they still had the opportunity to honor the request, if they were in a different district to go back, the numbers would still level out. I mean, everything indicated that if we did not grade-band, and if the board decided to consolidate, and, and, and we decided not to do that, we would still be able to do it, do it well, do it functionally. And, and to me, when you're dealing with the anxiety of the amount of change that we've been dealing with for the last couple of years, you know, I side with the idea of, okay, what is the easiest path to take care of what we need to take care of fiscally? But also acknowledge and recognize that our parents, some of our staff, they're still struggling with some of the change. How do we navigate that space and still be productive? And, and I, I, I will hundred percent say that the easiest path to make sure we do what we need to do, which is consolidate, look, if we, if that's the board's decision, and still recognize that our staff and our parents are apprehensive about the other part, then we don't do that right. And that's okay, right? We've gotta do what's best for kids. We gotta take care of our staff, but we also have to be fiscally responsible. I think we can do both. Oh, I didn't let you watch.
No, you did really well. And with that, kinda what he was alluding to is, is they, they showed us, because we did change the boundaries kind of from what they are right now, or what we all understand them to be, how, if, whether it's on a map or not. Um, and so, there's always this kind of strange thought of, like, okay, why do half of the kids in Arenas Valley go to Stout? And the other half, you know, if you're on the north side or the south side, then you go to Harrison. And ki, I mean, even my kids are like, you're kidding me. People drive from Arenas Valley all the way through town out to... And so, we did do, I don't, I don't know if we call it a fix, but an adjustment to that. So there are some kids that would see a change, but what he's talking about is, even in that change, the numbers of kids that, let's say, are going to Harrison that would then go to Stout match almost identically to those that are going to Harrison, vice versa, those that are going to Stout that would then go to Harrison. So if they wanted to stay where they were, or they had family members that they could, the schools have the capacity for those kids to stay where they're, they are, so that not so many kids, I use the word displaced, and nobody like that, no, not so many kids have to experience that change. So that was nice.
Yeah.
Does that answer some question?
Yes, yes. And I apologize, I was gone the meeting before, so I just wanted to make sure I understood it clear. The, I love the summary and the polls, that was much appreciated.
And, you know, the, so, uh, uh, we had, I had a meeting with PSCLC, something, we were talking about, uh, getting ready for potential. And they asked me, when was the board gonna make a final decision? And I said, it was gonna be in August. I said, well, before we, before you proceed, you know, into your next phase. So once you've, once your board's made a decision, then I go, then I'll go back to PSCLC. If you recall, they, um, they, they, they picked up a good chunk of cost for the feasibility study, because they recognized that whatever the implications were going to be for our community, that potentially we would go back to them and go, okay, as a result of the feasibility study that you funded, right? We wanna make these recommendations, and we're gonna, we may want some assistance with this, this, or that, right? As a result of it. And so, for example, if we are, if we consolidate two campuses and we do not grade-band, one of the things we're gonna wanna do is make sure we improve the, the playground situation for kindergarten, right? Because right now, your playgrounds really, you know, fit for that first grade through, um, sixth grade, right? Um, and so, we would wanna make sure we have a designated playground for kindergarten, which we do have the ability to make sure we do, but we could also partner with PSCLC if they approve that request and recognize it. That will tell you that comes with obstacles, too, because playgrounds are not considered instructional pieces of equipment. And just kinda like your, um, your, our football fields, they might, if I'm able to convince them that by consolidating and by looking at this, we are overall saving the district and the state millions of dollars with our one request, you know, which was where the conversation went. While they were reluctant at first, through the dialogue and through the recognition of the feasibility study, it was an interesting dialogue. He said, well, let's see what your, your, your board decides first, and then come back and talk, right? And so, I do think, but I, I bring it up to say, once the board's made a decision, I will go back to PSCLC with the final document from, um, a capital A E, um, with this feasibility study, um, to then make the request, any adjustments for the upcoming, uh, school year. Um, and then they would, you know, honor that and go through their process as well. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins, um, Mrs. Montenegro, Mr. Hawkins. So, in the state, what other disco districts are grade-branding? Is, is that a new term that schools are introducing to, like, rural districts like ours? Or is, is this happening? What, what are you saying?
It's not a, it's not new, right? So, all, I, I couldn't tell you the total number of districts in the state, anyway, so that does it. I can tell you a, a recent example that I'm very familiar with, which is Levington. So Levington, I believe, um, every building has its own grade, right? Uh, I think they have, like, a kindergarten, a first grade, and a second grade, and a third. So, it happens, right? Rather than having the neighborhood, those, all those kids get on the bus or get dropped off, right? Um, it's not necessarily new by any stretch. Um, yeah.
So we do a small, we're a small part of it in the kindergarten, all being at one. Um, I, I have a cousin, she's in a rural community in Oklahoma that does grade-banding. She, she shared with me over the Fourth of July break, so...
Did she like it?
She did. Again, her challenges, which was interesting. Did I see you right before or right after?
Right after.
Right after. Um, were pickup and drop-off. And, I, I mean, she's a stay-at-home mom, and it's a small community. Ada is probably smaller than Silver City. Um, she's got four boys. One is not in school yet, but needed to do three drop-offs and pickups. And even if she, again, she could choose to put them on the bus, but for whatever reason, the climate that we live in, not a lot of parents choose to put their kids on the bus. It's, it's different these days. Um, and so, even if she shows up thirty minutes early for the first one...
She still has to wait?
She's at the very end of the line on the third one. So, I mean, it's, you know, there's, it, it's, presents its own challenges just with, with our setup, so... That could be, but it is, you know, there's other states that do it, too, I guess, too.
I, I just, I've, I had mixed conversations with just constituents within my district and, you know, with the, the community as a whole, but...
What's the, what's the, what are you hearing?
Well, they're like, well, if we're, if we live in Arenas Valley and we have to transport our, our student to Harrison, that's just a longer trip than, so, more that's...
But they currently do that now.
I was gonna say, they already do that. That's not a good example.
Well, that's, that's, some, some of them that are, you know...
On the north side, maybe. Yeah, yeah.
Um, some are okay, there's, like, it's, it's, change is good.
So mostly from a transportation perspective, mostly? Okay.
And that's what I hear.
Having to pick up from work and then having to do all the way to Harrison. I, my wife and I did that, that was never an issue, but, you know, when it's a, something new...
Change.
And it's changed, it's gonna take, be, it's gonna be different just to adapt to that change.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's my biggest apprehension. My biggest apprehension to all of this is, one, that the weight of making sure we can pull this off and do it well, right? But it, it, I wish I could tell you as a board, I felt really clear, there will be a bump or two. I don't know what it'll be, but it, it, it won't go perfect. There's going to be an issue, whether it's a traffic pattern for the first couple of weeks. And anyone who's ever been around an elementary school or the high school, the first week of school, it is always traffic issue, whether it's Harrison, JV, or Stout. There's not a street in this city, the first week of school, where it's a perfect, calm piece. There's about ten to twelve minutes near every campus where the, that it's just a little congested, and then it smooths out. And I would say the same thing would be true, even if we don't, um, grade-band. If we do regular, which, uh, which is your traditional home environment, you will still have, for the first week of school, ten to twelve minutes of congestion around the schools as people navigate the, their drop-off time, their pickup time. There is no school in the country, the first week or so of school, where it goes smoothly, perfect, without an issue, right? You have novices like me, who, who Tiffany says, okay, I need you to go take and drop off Aaron. Oh, sure, no problem. And then I get in the, the, the parking lot, and I'm going in the wrong direction, or I'm in the wrong spot, and, and people are looking at me kinda a lot. It, it's going to happen, right? And so, there are some things I can tell you, we can do the best we can, but it's gonna take some transition. But I do think we are doing a lot, this was a big change. You know, as a board, you had to make the decision to go to a bond, right? Because you knew what was best for, for our cliff schools and for addressing the needs of our campus. You're having conversation, dealing with the fact that we are seeing declining enrollment. You have to, you're, you're weighing heavy decisions that, that are going to further the district in the long term, but you've gotta make those now. And then on top of that, you're dealing with budget issues from the federal level, right? And at the same time, right now, you're dealing with the potential for whether to have the regular configuration or the tradition. Now, I'm not one for saying go the safe route, but I think there's something to be said for, okay, we're doing this, this, and this. It's okay if we just do this, right? And, and in the community, I, I, I think you hear me saying one thing pretty clearly, because I'm hearing it as well as I talk to folks, right? And I recognize that people recognize what we need to do, but they're nervous about all the other things that we may elect to do, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. Mr. McMillan?
I have a question, uh, with the sixth grade move. Is that, would that be part of grade-band? Would that be, is that happening, whether there's consolidation or not? And what, where does that fit in the picture?
I don't, it's, ensure, in, in both scenarios, whether you do traditional or grade-banding, moving the sixth grade up takes advantage of the fact that you're gonna have to do some adjustments, uh, whether you're, when you're, with bringing in kindergarten and moving classrooms around. And so, to, for capacity. And that gets us right around eighty percent, a little higher, and don't, don't quote me for that, Silver City Daily Press. Um, but, but, but it gets, it, it makes sure that we have enough room, right? And, and it deals with what we already know to be true at La Plata, which is, they are locally underutilizing their facility. And they're still, even with putting sixth grade back over there, it's still going to be underutilized, but better use of the space.
Thank you.
Good question. Glad you asked that.
Any other question or comment?
Um, I just had one question, not that this has still be, I decided today, but, um, are we looking at time changes for any of the schools at all, as far as when we start, when we end?
Wow, that's a... No. I mean, we will, we, you know, as far as bell schedules and things of that nature, we will. And when I first arrived in Silver, and I don't wanna, one of the things that we worked to improve was we had every elementary thing, like, two minutes or three minutes off from the way they dropped off, right? So it could be, and, and then that's not a bad thing, but as a parent, it was, it was kind of confusing a little at times. If you, presumably, you only had one elementary to go to. But it was just hard for, for all of that. So we cleaned that up a little bit, had our start times with elementary, starting and stopping at the same time, and we made, it made things better. And so, what I would hope that we'd be able to do is, through this process, is keep that streamlined so that it's easier for parents, regardless of your daughters at, at Harrison or Stout, and your niece and nephew, you gotta pick up, you know where you gotta go and really get there. So we'll do our best to keep things streamlined, and hopefully we won't have an issue.
Were you more wondering if we did the grade-banding, like, to try to kind of, like, stack it so that it didn't fall out at the same time?
So it was two-part. I've had a lot of people asking me that question, for whatever reason. I don't know if, when we consolidate, we, you know, and I, it's just an extension of the changes. I think they just wanna be clear on all of those things, and trying to coordinate jobs and stuff. Um, but the other part is, it impacts, like, tutoring, activities, uh, lots of different things. And then, um, you know, people coming from jobs is the main thing. Um, but the other part, I think there was just a question about that. Anytime we're making any change, that comes up. The second part was, does that take the pressure off if we stagger times for, say, secondary versus, which we do to a degree, anyway, um, secondary to elementary, or... It's up for grabs. I'm not saying we need to, I'm just saying I've been approached about the question.
At, at the moment, I don't have any anticipation of going back in and making those adjustments, but I do think, once we get into the weeds of getting things ready for the next year, I think that's when we determine what the, what the needs need to be as far as scheduling, if anything, right? Um, so at the moment, no, I think we're gonna be able to stay consistent. I think that's, one of the things I'm trying to center in on is a sense of normalcy in the midst of the change, which is hard to do, right? And, um, I'm becoming much more cognizant and aware of, okay, with all the change, and I met with principals, like, in a year from now, we're gonna have a lot of stuff going on. Potentially, we could have dirt moving around in Cliff, right? We've got sixth grade going into La Plata, potentially. Potentially, you could have, you know, elementary schools that are consolidating into two others, so you're gonna have some staff, there's not gonna be an entity or space not impacted. And so, what are some of the things we could do to stay consistent, stay calm, and, and maintain some of the normalcy in the midst of all the change? And so, that will be one of the things I'll try to do, um, based on the direction and guidance of the board.
The other thing we talked about was, if we chose to do grade-banding and we were staggering times for drop-off, and say, some school started a whole lot later, but a parent needed to drop off by before eight o'clock, but school wasn't starting till eight forty-five, this is just theoretical, would we have, would, would we find a way to make sure that it was staffed so that parents can drop off at, like, I don't know? I don't even, I'm being super theoretical, I don't even know what it is, so I don't wanna put a number, but let's say seven fifty-five.
Yeah. I think, and so, from a contractual timeframe, right? It, it, as long as we have the, the same start, the amount of time within the day, I'm gonna be careful, 'cause I'm looking at my HR guy, I'm like, subliminally make sure I'm saying this right, right? So long as we have the right proper number of hours from start, to start to end, you can stagger and do that, you just can't extend it beyond contractual times, to your point. If you started at seven forty-five, right, you just wanna make sure that the end time is reflective of the maximum amount of, uh, day, hours within that day for them. Um, so they answered the question, which is what they were doing before, right? Before I got here, you were doing that. You had the staggering, you'd start and stop at the different campuses, and it was okay. Confusing, but it was definitely okay. You could do that, yes, ma'am.
So as it stands, right now, the times would stay the same for this upcoming year?
Yes, ma'am, as it stands.
Like, for right, right now, like, twenty-five, twenty-six?
Yes.
For sure.
Yeah, for, for this school year, yes, the change of time, schedules, uh, the, uh, start and stop times, I, I've sent that out to principals, they verified it for me to make sure that I didn't mess up anything. So meeting the eleven forty is always a big deal, and I will tell you, the Public Education Department is definitely on it. So any and every time you make a change to your schedule this year, in any way, shape, or form, but the PED is saying, you need to send an updated schedule to us to reflect that you're still meeting the one thousand one hundred, hundred and forty-hour requirement. So let's say, Mr. Hawkins decides to declare a snow day, or multiple snow days, and we run out of the, whatever little hours we have, which we're kinda tight on that, not very many, then boom, I've gotta now send a schedule to PED that shows where we made the adjustment to make sure we make that eleven forty. And so, to your point, right now, I, I, I went back, checked the hours, I reached out to Cliff, I'm like, I need you to help me out, check your hours, right? And so, we've checked everything. We've got, um, you know, a remote day or two in there to account for it. And I think we've got enough hours for one day, right? And so, if, if we get a snowpocalypse, oh my goodness, you know, we're gonna, I'll have to put in a request for a waiver for, you know, some remote day learning, uh, uh, beyond the, what they allow for us.
For clarity, we do not build snow days into our schedule, like most people think we do.
We try to, we try to work through it, right? We wanna stay safe, but try to work through it.
Yeah.
All right.
Everything we're, everything we're discussing right now is not impacting the current, or the upcoming year, but we're talking a year out plus down, if we'll go, just to clarify.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Grade-banding, consolidation.
That's right, that's right.
August fourth, your school is normal. There are no changes. You know, Jose Barrios is starting August fourth, Sixth Street is starting, Stout, Harrison, everything is normal. One of the reasons the board wisely decided to not make any decisions, uh, in this summer, was to reassure parents that you wouldn't have to worry about change this school year, right? We'll have a whole year, based on the recommendation of the board, to prepare our community, our staff, and our students on what potential the decision will be, uh, when you make that decision in August.
Perfect. Anything else on the feasibility study? I think that was very helpful. I'm gonna recommend that we table, um, the review of an agenda setting. I think that was very helpful. I'm going to recommend that we table um, the review of an agenda setting. I'll just give you kind of a highlight. We'll try to get it on next month if everybody can just do their homework. For some reason, in my memory, Mike, you could probably say yes or no. Lisa and Mr. Hawkins and I just have not been able to find it. There is a format for our agenda in policy. And I don't know if that was just like a format that was just floating around prior to Mr. Hawkins coming. But what I, what I'm looking for is if there is a format in policy, I would like to take a look at it and see kind of what we decided, when we decided about open public comment. And then decide if we want to stick with what it currently is, which is it has to be on the agenda or you have to reach out. Or do we want to make one section apart where open um, public comment can be on whatever the person attending wants to talk about. So that's kind of where I'm going with it. So if we can all be ready by next month with reviewing the policy that's in your board book, we'll put it on the work session again for next month. If you know of something else in policy, we have not been able to find something that's literally like lines out. This is what the agenda should look like from a format perspective. But if that is in there, I would like to bring that forward just so that we could get it all cleaned up. That is the highlight of what's to come and what I'm kind of working towards. All right. Um, so we are, can I get a motion to table the review, agenda setting pol- procedure and policy? Motion. Thank you, Ms. Dr. Diaz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan. Um, all those in favor, oh, we don't, we're not taking action. We don't have to take action. Sorry, never mind. Scratch that. A motion for adjournment, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Khan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan. And Mr. Khan, will you do a roll call?
Uh, Mrs. Montenegro?
Yes.
Dr. Diaz?
She said yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Clement.
Thank you. We are adjourned um, from this work session at six oh five PM. Call this meeting to order. This is the July Board Meeting for the Silver Consolidated Board of Education. Thank you for joining us, parents, students, coaches, members of administration, fellow board members and those out in the audience. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. Um, it is July twenty-first to twenty, two, twenty twenty-five and six twelve PM. Patrick, will you do a roll call, please?
Mrs. Montenegro?
Here.
Dr. Diaz?
Here.
Myself, here. Mr. McMillan?
Here.
And Mrs. Clement.
Uh, Mrs. Clement, let us know that she would not be able to attend this evening. Um, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and the New Mexico flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the example of perfect friendship among the united cultures.
All right. Uh, first item on our agenda is review and approval of minutes. In your board packet, you will find the minutes from our work session and regular board meeting of June sixteenth, as well as the finance committee meeting of June twelfth. I open the floor for a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Khan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Next, uh, number three would be consideration and approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, first by Dr. Diaz, second by Mr. Khan. Um, any discussion? Do I, do you want me to let them know? Um, we are going to move um, Mr. Hawkins' superintendent presentation of the twenty-five, twenty-six look fours to next board meeting. So that will be moved to our next board meeting.
Thank you. Ever changing landscape of things. I want to make sure that I can give you a clearer picture on some things and I don't have that ready now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Consideration, and uh, we did the agenda. Information and presentations, these are our non-action items um, pro- under programs and presentations. The first one we have is the recognition of Silver High School track athletes uh, that placed at State. So I will call Coach Landers to the podium to present. Thank you for joining us. You can... Whoever, whoever you want to call up.
Okay, um, really proud of this year's team. We're, we're very young. And we kind of challenged the team this year to go from good to great. And we wanted to be great in everything that we did, from the way that we prepared to the way that we competed, to the way that we conducted ourself in the classroom. You know, we have seventy-four students that make up our track and field program. And I'm just really proud of the way that they represented track and field. Um, Oregon Mounds coach texted me last week and he said, I've just been so proud the way that your kids compete and support each other and represent Silver Schools. And so it's just such an honor to be their coach. Because not only are we trying to develop great athletes, we're trying to develop great kids. And they, they embody that. And that's so much about the culture of Silver Schools, the culture of their parents, as well as the way that their teachers have really built success. I feel like track and field got the best kids. And so I'm really proud. And so at State, um, in the four by eight, we were ranked fourth coming in, I believe. And we ended up third and we beat Los Alamos, which is a big deal to me. Because we tried to take them out on a couple of things. And so that comprised of Isaac Beck, Brock and Farhad and KK. And it was an incredible performance. They shaved off about fifteen seconds off of their time. And that's a big jump in track and field. And then in the medley, um, once again, we were ranked sixth and they got second. And so two school records right there really did a, did an incredible job of peaking at the right time and putting mission and team above themselves. And you saw that grit, you saw that effort, you saw all those bloody Tuesdays come to play in both of those relays. And the medley had Milo to Brines and then Austin Bickett and then um, Brock and then KK. So once again, a great, great performance from them. And Dakota Medonso, he pole vaulted this year and continued to improve. And was not ranked at State and finished sixth and medaled and gave us some points there as well. And the upside of him and where that's going to put him um, as he continues to grow is exciting. Because all of these kids have next level opportunity. And we're already seeing college interest, even though that they were all sophomores. And then we have Anna Lee. Anna Lee, she finished second in the four hundred with a time of fifty-eight seconds. Um, she continues to garner a ton of attention from the next level. Couple of pretty big D-one schools are knocking on her door already. And so she's gone into her junior year with a great opportunity. And then surprised me because she was dead tired. She finished fifth in the two hundred. And so, but that really doesn't sum up the fact that we're young. And I'm looking forward to us taking that next step with these kids. Who put in so much work and so much time into becoming great student athletes. And I think that's key is the student athlete portion because the character matters. So proud of you guys.
We would love the opportunity to shake your hand and, and get a picture with you and your coach. And, and parents that might like to get that, that opportunity.
And then come stand up here, right here in the.
I got one more thing. So the medley team, they actually went to Nationals and so did Dakota uh, and Kaylee Wenzel at Adidas. And they, they were, they had really incredible performances. Our medley team finished eleventh in the nation. So pretty incredible.
So you have to remind me what the medley?
Um, it's like a combination of different distances.
Two hundred, two hundred, four hundred and eight. Who ran eighth? That's impressive.
Where's the coach? There he is.
Any other?
Right, um, can you just please, yeah, a little bit? All right, find it. Out of three, one, two, who are we kidding? I took about eight pictures already. See, all eight, all eight.
He's growing in the middle.
Parents, thank you so much for the early mornings and the late afternoon.
I can. Thank you, guys. All right. Next up, we have recognition of our Silver High School NHD student uh, that placed at Nationals. And I will welcome Mr. Wilson to the podium.
Thank you, guys. Um, as you know, we took Nine Projects DC. And Chidima smoked it and we got, that's all I can say. I mean, when, when you score in the top ten, and, and for those that don't know how it works is that you have ten rooms of ten students. And then you have to place first in your room. And then you go to the round two. Now, round one, you have the interview and all the bells and whistles there. And she led off that day. She actually went early ahead of time and she just captivated. I, I mean, I walked out of that room. I knew that we had a top ten finish there. It was just a question, you know, fingers crossed that we'd have more. But, but I knew right then and there. She interviewed amazingly, um, finished the interview, then came back and said, hey, wait, I got some more stuff. And um, just blew away the judges. So once you get past that initial round, then you compete again. This time, there's no interview process. The individual documentary, which was on the Rwandan genocide, was just a standalone at that point and she placed ninth. Um, and that's, you know, when you look at what you're, you're, you're dealing with the, the students that are the best in their states. You're dealing with international students coming out of private schools in Singapore, uh, South Korea. Uh, China even was there this year, I believe. Um, it's just, I mean, we do this and, and she's, you know, the, the, the tip of the, of the bayonet right now. I mean, she's, she's, you know, amazing and, and she's only a sophomore. You know, and, and when I look at that, I'm like, only a sophomore. Wow. Um, you know, the, the potential is unlimited, you know? And, and we had, to be fair, we had some really good finishes in our, in our respective rooms. And... And, you know, uh, Claudia's not here, so I don't have to worry about saying, humbly saying it. But, but we, but we have placed in top ten straight since two thousand and eighteen. A lot of pressure on all of us. Um, but, but she's just utterly amazing, and I, I just, I was just floored, so, um...
Can you tell us a little bit about your, about your presentation?
Okay, can you hear me? Okay. So I did an individual documentary about the Rwandan trials, which were court trials that followed the nineteen ninety-four Rwandan genocide. And they helped to prosecute people that, um, ha, played a role in that genocide. And it was the first time genocide was, like, first time, like, genocide was convicted. And that helped develop, um, the international legal system that led to courts like the International Criminal Court that continues to prosecute people that have, um, roles in, like, crimes against humanity. Um, yeah.
What, what, what led you to that, to the decision to research that?
Hmm, well, when I first, like, researching my topics for NHD this year, I first landed on a Nigerian political activist, but I changed my topic. And what drew me to this topic in particular was the judicial aspect of it. And I feel like a lot of people take the international court system, hmm, like, they don't, like, see how much of a privilege it is to, like, have a strong judicial system, especially in the United States. And I feel like just bringing light to, like, what people had to went through to, like, have, so, to have, like, a steady court system that we have today, like, internationally. And I, like, seeing that not a lot of people knew about it, made me want to bring light to it, so, yeah.
That's awesome. How many times have you been to Nationals?
Well, I went once in the eighth grade, and then it was my first time going to Nationals.
Awesome. Well, we would love to shake your hand.
This way, I'll make you, this way you both tall. Thank you. Congratulations. Parents, if you don't mind writing that both are pony students. Easy, be careful. Is that, did make sure I have not re-looked? Congratulations, Dan. Thanks, Ben.
All right, thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you notice the track team waiting to hear her?
That was nice.
Yes.
It was very kind of them.
Going to one sandwich?
All right, next up, we have our SEH President, Ms. Diane Carrico. Remind me your name.
Madam President, Board Members, Mr. Hawkins. Good to see you guys. I hope you had a good summer. I hope yours wasn't as fast as mine was. It flew by, but we had a lot of issues, um, like right at the end of the year, where we had to support some teachers and kind of clear some things out. We have one more issue coming out that hopefully will, will get settled soon. Um... What else was I gonna say? Forgot. Oh, we have, um, NEA coming up, or NEA, new employee orientation coming up. We're excited about that one. We'll be up there to, to, um, welcome everyone to the district. I don't know how many there is yet, but we'll, we'll... How many?
Forty-five.
Forty-five? Oh, not as bad as last year, but it's exciting to have new people in our district. It'll be good. Um, we're also, um, planning our first bargaining session for the eleventh of September, where we have a couple of issues that we want to settle up on, and then we're, we're going to try to put the whole CBA together again, print it, and give it out to everyone, because it seems to work a lot better for everybody, everybody's on the same page. Maybe we won't have as many issues as we did during the summer. Um, I think Desiree had a few things she wanted to say?
No, she says, "The CBA is from twenty eighteen, so it's time to come update, um, for everyone's sake." Um, we're in, we are looking for, um, having some trainings, um, or we are, as it happens. More knowledge we have, whatever we consider.
Thank you.
Hopefully a calm one before all the craziness starts. Good to see you guys.
You too. Thank you. All right. Information to the board, Superintendent Mr. William Hawkins is gonna present on, here it is, Silver High School, class of twenty-twenty-six graduation date, and Cliff High School, twenty-twenty-six graduation date.
Madam President, members of the board, the administration votes for Silver High at the cliff reviewed, um, the upcoming schedule for the current year, and identified these two particular dates as the dates designated for graduation. I do believe that they checked with conflict with the new schedule to make sure that we were outside of the range of any potential conflicts. Um, twenty-second of May for Silver High, um, and May fifteenth, we're, and, yeah, this is gonna be a tough one for me. Um, so I just, every time I see it, I just get a little, "Oh, my gosh, it's here." And, and it's so far away, and it's still here, so... Okay, all right.
All right, so, um, Silver High, Friday, May twenty-second. And that's usually around seven-thirty. Is that what we can plan on? Yes. Last year, the only reason I say is board members put it in their phone right now, and then Mr. Khan was texting me in April. He's like, "What time is it?" And I'm like, um, it says six. That doesn't sound right, so... Seven-thirty is what we'll do tentatively. And then Cliffs, Friday, May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-six, that's usually around six. Yeah, no worries, no worries. We'll just say tentatively six PM. No, would you like to do that now?
So, Madam President, members of the board, uh, I'd like to take this opportunity, if you don't mind, to introduce to you Davina Turner. Hi, as, as our, the new principal at the cliff that you, that was presented, and we are so excited for.
Welcome.
And, and as you're aware, we have an interim principal at Silver High School, um, uh, Grace Barella, who, uh, comes with a wealth of experience, both as an administrator and recently as our school-based mental health coordinator.
I thought she looked familiar.
She does. She said a few things at a couple of meetings once. Uh, and so we've, they have, uh, been able to spend some time together, um, uh, through professional learning communities, training. Um, it is a requirement and expectation that our administrators understand how we do our culture here in Silver, which is collaboration, working together. Um, and the two of them have been working together, like, uh, amazingly as well. Um, I would...
Phenomenal.
For the, I was gonna go there.
Essentially.
But, um, I appreciate the work that they've done already this summer. Uh, Ms. Turner obviously doesn't sleep, um, because she has, like, been on it in a positive way, really learning the campus, meeting with staff, um, talking to folks in the community, and already just working, working, working. Um, so I appreciate her being here. And I don't know that if Ms. Barella got a summer, a day off at all this summer. So, three days. I can't believe we gave her so many. Um, so, but I, I look forward to working with them and, and their, and their new roles or new roles, and so they're doing great already.
Awesome. Thank you for taking on the roles, and we're excited to have you guys on board. Um, I had a question, and now it's gone. Oh! Sorry, we hired you right in the middle of building a new school. Have you ever been a principal at a new site where we're building a school all at once? Yes, you are. We all are. I mean, this is our, this is, have you built a school before?
I have not been on the, this side of building a school. I've been on the side of staffing a new school.
Okay.
But not on the building side of it. I've usually let smarter people do that, so now I'm jumping into all, both feet.
That's so cool. And that's moving along well, I'm assuming?
Yes, we've been meeting, so, uh, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. So we have been meeting twenty-five, twenty-six, of course. So we have been meeting, um, weekly, um, this summer. And so for our cliff community and cliff staff, um, while the, we have begun the phase-one design phase, and so they look at the, the minimum adequacy standard requirements for, uh, our size that we were approved for, going back, looking at class sizes, hallways, facilities, gyms, got materials, and already working on the configurations to get to that space. We're far from complete, right? There will be an opportunity for, um, whole staff engagement, as well as student and, um, parent engagement, community engagement. They'll get an opportunity to interact with the design team, uh, Decker this fall. And so we are well on our way of getting close to that point of having a design. But yes, ma'am, this summer, they did not slow down. We wanted to stay on track as much as we can, um, knowing that there's going to be a point where bureaucracy is bureaucracy, and we're not able to do things the way we want, at the pace we want. So we knew that we wanted to stay on target with this first phase, which is getting down to the nuts and bolts of the bare basics of what we need, and then going from the design from there.
And I understand you went and visited some sites of recent builds?
We were going to. We had an opportunity to go and do that, but I had to make some adjustments. I had a, a court date, uh, for the school, so we had to make some arrangements. But I do know that they're going to get an opportunity, or earliest fall, hopefully, uh, along with some parents, to go take a look at some sites, not just Albuquerque, but other, uh, spaces that are comparable to our, our campus complement.
Awesome. It's exciting. Exciting times. All right, well, we did look for us, guys. This thing is like messed up.
I, I might have leaned on it.
All right, Mr. Hawkins, anything else for us?
At this time, no, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, next up is our Associate Superintendent, Mr. Luis Alvarez, with our personnel report and updated student handbooks. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam President, uh, members of the board, Mr. Hawkins, and everyone in the audience. So, uh, before you, I do have, uh, as you can see, uh, my team and I have been extremely busy. Uh, so we have one whole full page of new hires, and that part is, look at my back. We have about three-quarters of a page of some positions that we still need to fill. Uh, the one good thing that I can tell you is, uh, that these are some coaching positions. Uh, we have already, uh, interviewed, and there are two positions that have already been filled on there. Uh, we do have two, uh, instructional positions, uh, that we are working on currently. So right now, we've got a total of about four. We're at ninety-six percent filled. Uh, I'm hoping that we might, might get a little bit higher, uh, by the end of this week. So I do stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Alvarez? Nope. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Did you want to do student handbooks?
Yes. So you did receive, uh, in your board book, and it's a lot of information. You did that. Uh, so I'll kind of just do some real quick highlights. So for the majority of all of the elementaries, the only changes were going to be the discipline matrix. Those were the only changes that we had, and of course, the changing of the names, uh, also putting in, uh, new personnel, uh, where they need to be. So the elementaries are pretty quick and, and easy to, uh, see. Uh, anything that was changed is in the, in the yellow. You can kind of follow along. The biggest campus that ended up having changes, uh, was La Plata. Uh, their biggest changes that, that they ended up having is, uh, they wanted to get students to class, uh, a little bit more on time. So they lined that out as far as movements in the hallways. So they made a change there. They also updated their times for lunches. There was a change made there. Uh, the excused absences, we had talked about it, but it hadn't been actually fleshed out. So now it's all, uh, in the, in the student handbook, so the parents can see that, and they can see what we're doing as far as, uh, that campus. And they're following our district attendance plan as well. Bell schedule changes, uh, school telephone news. This also fol, follows along with what's going on at the high school, as well as at the middle school. And all of our schools have to have a cell phone policy that is required by the state. Uh, so we do have that in there as well. Uh, it did talk about our wellness rooms. As my sister sighs over here. It's in there, uh, so that we can utilize the wellness rooms. And, uh, it also talks about our house system, uh, as it hadn't in the past. With that, the last, uh, change is gonna end up being, uh, locker use, which it basically, uh, identifies that, uh, those are school property. We have to do a, a search or seizure. Uh, we can do that. We can also go ahead and, uh, ask the students to go ahead and please take care of the lockers. As, uh, it gets a little expensive as, as they do damage. Uh, and then the last one, uh, was on lunch detention, uh, where it does identify, uh, failure to comply if students don't go to in-school suspension, uh, if that is required. And last but not least, is our, uh, discipline matrix, where we made a change in possession of weapons. Uh, the change there was driven, uh, the one thing that I do want to tell you is that in our handbooks, we meet with a group of parents. So a group of parents sit in our committee, and we basically tell them, "These are the things that the administrators are saying are working. These are the things that they're saying that they're needing some, some help on and how to change." So we have a dialogue that goes back and forth. Uh, they do suggestions. Uh, they take some time, and they kind of go through all of the things. Uh, so what was determined as far as on, uh, possession of a weapon, is that we wanted to look at for some of our kids. Uh, sometimes kids do forget that they are carrying a, a pocket knife with them. So they are given, uh, that opportunity and flexibility to where it doesn't go to an automatic expulsion. So they can go ahead and make that determination based upon the intent of why they were carrying the, the weapon. And so that was one big one. The other one for the elementaries was the cell phone policy, because we did not have a cell phone policy. And so that was a big drive for the, for the parents.
What was the cell phone policy just?
So, so the cell phone policy is probably what's happening at the middle school and at the high school, to where they're gonna go ahead, and if the, the cell phone does, uh, go off in class, it does become a disturbance. First time, they're gonna go ahead and, and confiscate it. Parent will come and pick it up. No disciplinary action at that time. Second time is that they'll, they'll go ahead and they'll call the parent, they'll pick it up, and then discipline will follow it. And so they will go ahead and follow that discipline matrix. Uh, for all of the elementaries, it's the same, uh, also for the high school and the middle school. Uh, they are, the high school and the middle school already had a cell phone policy, so that's, that changes specifically for the elementary. The weapon change was the only big one, and aggressive behavior. That was, that was driven by a, a cohort of parents, where they, where they ended up saying, uh, the principal was asking for, "I need something." You've got two ends of the spectrum, right? Horseplay and then an actual fight. But they said sometimes there's, there's some behavior that kind of falls in between. So they came up with, uh, physi, physical aggression. So it behaves physical aggression, like an elbow, tripping, shoving, pushing, uh, that's not, they're not friends, they're not, you know, joking around. And it's, it's a lead-up to a fight. They wanted to have something in between. So we definitely listen to the parents, uh, as well as our, our administration, and make changes accordingly.
Okay, um, so as I'm sure you're aware, we have to approve a district policy tonight.
To cell phones?
To cell phones. And there's two alternatives, like, there's two, so we need your help with picking the one we're gonna adopt at
Okay.
for the, for the schools. Um, is there a way you could get him a copy of those two really quick? Just so he could help us?
I did look at them a little bit earlier.
Did you?
Um, I think, based on whatever direction you want to head, they're broad enough to where our policy will definitely adhere. It does give you the, the lead way to go ahead and go either way. But I'll be more than happy to give you my advice.
So one of them is that we have, like, a storage... So one of them is that we have like a storage type thing, right? So that would be increased cost. That's unfunded.
Right. And that's that's something that I think would put a big burden on our parents and students as well. Also, any kind of damage or anything for holding those, I think is a good idea. So I would go with the other policy.
That's what I thought. Okay. And we, oh, sorry, I'll open this up to the board. You're trying to make sure that all discipline matrices across the schools are pretty consistent, correct? We're not going to see one type at Jose Barrios and a different type.
So all of the elementaries are the same. The one change for CLIF this year is that CLIF, CLIF had always had a different discipline matrix up until this year. And they were very open to, you know what, let's all get on the same page. So our middle schools are tied to the same discipline matrix. Our high schools are tied to the same discipline matrix. And all of our elementaries are tied to the same discipline matrix.
Okay, so all all students at the same level would see would see the same. Okay. And then my other question was, a knife is still a scary thing to come to school. It doesn't need to go straight to expulsion, but there is, it's not just a nothing, right?
No. So so what that, the change that we ended up making is that it's at the discretion of the principal and also the information that is gathered through the investigation. So the investigation is going to be the driving force as well as the intent.
What's the first offense consequence?
So the first offense can be five days.
No worries. Thank you.
So the first offense is a possible contact of the police. And the reason that we said possible is we have had students in the past that have come into school. They've been working at the farm, realize, oh, my gosh, I got a weapon on me. Go to the principal and say, hey, no. Can I self-report? Turn it absolutely. In in those situations, we understand there's going to be mistakes made. We can go ahead and take those. So that's why it's a possible contact with the police.
Well, that's all it is for once, for the first time?
The first one is it's a five day out of school.
First day, first time is five days.
Defense, five days, we are talking about a weapon.
Okay, good. Okay.
So it is five days. The maximum that we're looking at is is a ten day and an expulsion.
Okay, so even on the self-reporting, it would still be five days?
Five days, that's correct.
Okay.
Because it is still a weapon on campus.
That's right. That's right. Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that. And then the only other thing is, we don't have the La Plata handbook in here. It may have just been an oversight. And it sounds like that one had the most changes.
That one does have the most.
So Lisa's going to go attach it, so it'd be a sentence just out of that.
Okay. So that'll give us a little bit of time. We don't take action until later in the board meeting. And so once it gets uploaded into your board book. Oh, thank you. Everyone can take a look. I'll pass it down since I'm talking. And then if anyone has any questions, we might circle back.
Not a problem at all.
Madam President, it looks like.
Yes, board members, any other questions?
Madam President, it looks like on the cell phone, it looks like the storage of the cell phones are in both policies. There's scenario one and two.
Both of them require us to have?
Yeah, I'm seeing that, right? So basically what they're doing right now, Mr. Hawkins?
Pretty much. And so correctly from Montserrat High School and La Plata, it's not here. So they keep them in their lockers, right? And at the high school, they're not supposed to have.
They're supposed to be in their backpacks or in their pockets. And if they turn, if they have to bring them to the office, we have a little storage bin that is behind the secretary's desk that's in a cabinet that's closed. So nobody can walk by and just randomly pick up one. It's where it's not locked necessarily. It is in that location.
And I believe the middle school, they put them in the, they put it in the safe.
We just got knocked out. I think so. I was just trying to read this policy real quick to see if there's one that doesn't have that.
It doesn't mention. I just don't know which one.
Both of them should have that same initial language on it.
So that's the whole thing. That's the whole first one.
Yep.
And then this is the alternative to. What do you say that's different?
Still think it's number two is the one that we're looking at. Mr. Alvarez, am I correct in that? It's number two?
There is number two in there. The only thing on number two. I mean, I'm trying to verify between one and two if there's any changes. Where it ends up saying that there will be a conference held. All of our policies do have a conference with the parents. So that'll that'll go ahead and take care of that. As far as it says where you will not be able to search the device, we don't search the device. If there's something that's incriminating, violation of policy or anything like that, we allow at least to be able to do that. Because we're not going to get into, we're not going to get into that piece.
This one has that. The next one has four bullet. I'm trying to see the difference. This one only have, only has two, text to speech, speech to text, use of the device, medical necessity. And then up here is there's four. Text to speech, medical necessity, a health, safety, or emergency reason, or for educational reasons, as determined by the classroom teacher or site administrator. The second.
Because I think it's more aligned with what we do.
Right.
Which pretty much covers the same thing. The other one is very specific.
Yeah, this one doesn't have, this is, this would have if it was, I think both of them have those four bullets. Actually, this one doesn't. This one doesn't have those four bullets. You still think two, right?
I still think two.
So it's just kind of different where they put the bullet, but still health and safety, individual education, and classroom or instructed under the supervision of classroom teacher and other reasons determined.
And which kind of what we're doing now, I think is most in line with is number two. If you'd like to take a moment more and then revisit it in August, the school year will have started, but we could make adjustments. But I believe number two is where we currently are. And the policy that we have now, we are in line with these are recommendation policies. So as a.
Well, we don't have a, we don't have a cell phone policy.
We don't have a cell phone policy, board policy. What we have is our handbook policy for cell phones. And so last year, when the district made the decision to to for the cell phone policy at the high school and middle school, we kind of got ahead of the state. And so the district reaffirms our alignment with the state's state's recommendation policies. If number two most aligned was what we're currently doing, it's not like perfect, but it's most aligned with it. But if we need to make an adjustment, we most certainly can. But right now, beginning of the school year, one of the things I would say is, we currently have a cell phone policy. If the board wants to take another moment and read through the the board policy options a little closer and then make a decision for the board policy, that won't change the policy that we already have in handbook as far as we're already aligned with both of it. There's just some nuances. I don't want, I want to make sure that you're all comfortable with the nuances, if that makes sense.
Okay.
What do you think?
I feel comfortable taking action. You guys want a table?
Me, both seem pretty similar.
It's 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 just where they move the language.
And to me, it seems like version two seems a little bit more strict. They use the word prohibit, I think, where in that version one, it's, the the rules are basically delegated to the principals and the superintendent, which I mean, the second one also mentions that as well. But to me, it seems like the second one's a little bit more firm. But I'm I'm fine with either, I think.
Okay, I think we can take action. On La Plata's handbook, thanks Lisa for getting that up. It says, school ends at three fifteen. So earlier, we said nothing changes for twenty-five, twenty-six. That's a change, correct?
It is, because we didn't get those bell schedules until like last week.
Last week.
Mr. Hawkins finally got able to send those out. So we probably had that before we made the changes in our handbook. Because ours might be wrong too. I wasn't sure if we got it in in time.
It used to be three twenty-five, correct? Three twenty.
It's going to be, we did get out at three fifteen. It's going to be three twenty-five. And instead of starting at eight oh five, we start at eight o'clock, basically. The first bell will ring at eight. Class starts at eight oh five. So it's like a fifteen minute difference than what it was.
Okay, how are we getting the word out?
I will send all of that.
And why? Yeah, was it hours?
No.
It was hours, getting to eleven forty.
Okay.
So ours might be wrong in one.
Okay, so real quickly, because how many people are watching us on Facebook? They must think something's going on. Okay, S H, oh, sixteen. We lost them. We lost.
Already passed.
S H S will start at?
Eight oh five.
Eight oh five. And what was it? I'm sorry, that doesn't matter, but what was it? Okay, so now it's first bell is eight and then eight oh five, and they will dismiss. And what was it before? Three twenty?
Three fifteen. So it's a ten minute difference. It went, so I had to make a ten minute difference on our schedule.
Ten on the end and five at the beginning, so fifteen total. Okay.
To get to the right.
Okay. La Plata, can anyone report on that? I mean, I have it.
Five and three twenty-five.
Their 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 book says three fifteen.
Ten minute difference.
It is highlighted, ma'am.
Well, I thought that was the change. That's not the change.
Yeah, and I think it put on that, we need to change the time.
Oh, need to update time. Yep, they did.
And that's on me. I I gave them the, I was still working on the last minute of, of to make sure that we met P E D's requirements for calendar and still had just enough time, barely, I think, for a day of snow. So when I did that, eight oh five, I basically had to do fifteen minutes, so ten minutes on the end, five in the front. And so if you go back and look at your schedules from the previous year, you'll see that five minutes upfront, then ten minutes.
But we should just say eight A M, because that's the first bell, right? School starts at eight?
The first bell will ring at eight o'clock and they will be targeting eight oh five to first period.
Okay, what about elementaries?
Elementary starts at eight fifteen. So they started at eight twenty previously. This upcoming year, they will start at eight fifteen.
So first bell will ring at eight ten?
Yes, if they do that five minute, yes. And then the end of the day for elementary will be three ten. It was three o'clock. It is now three ten.
So, okay.
Ten minute difference, but it's thirty minutes two years ago.
So is that why people were asking?
I, I guess.
But we didn't, and they wouldn't, we hadn't put that out yet, because we just got that taken care of this past week. So I was going to put it out along with just to do the the regular schedules.
Yeah, I I didn't, I actually just thought they were asking me tied to.
The changes.
The change, like this whole stuff, like is there anything else?
No, and I just sent this out to principals maybe Thursday or Friday this past week.
Yeah, we're, yeah, let's go there next. That's where we're headed.
Fifty? That's the same as last year. The CLIF stays the same. They're overachievers already. So because of their four day schedule, they have a specific amount of time within that, within their number of days to make sure that they can get all, to meet the eleven forty. And so theirs pretty much stayed locked in.
Okay, and then just because we didn't have La Plata as we were going through this, there's a lot of yellow with this excused and unexcused absences. Can you do that again really quickly?
Sure thing.
Do you need the copy from up here?
So that'll be on page ten. We all on the same page then, already. So excused and unexcused, and and to verify, excused absences will be absences that maybe parent ended up taking kid to the doctor, a dentist, you know, there are various reasons. The parents can go ahead and excuse up to seven unexcused, excused absences for the entire school year. After that, and this needs to be reported to the attendance secretary. With the attendance secretary, the parents need to go ahead and provide that doctor's excuse. Or they have up to seven of them. Parent can just say, hey, my kid's sick. I'm calling to let you know. Now we say Billy. Little Billy's not going to make it work, right? And so so he, or to school, and so he's not going to be in, as long as they notify it. After they're seven, then they go to what is called unexcused. And under our school policy, we go ahead and we send out notifications and letters, three day, five day, seven day, and ten day. This piece isn't changing, but it hadn't been included in their handbook. So that's a change for them. They hadn't put it in there. After ten excused absences, then we end up having a meeting with the parents. Meeting is scheduled. If absences continue after that, then a C Y F D is submitted. Require the parents to go ahead and meet with the principal, try to address that and mitigate why the why the student is having poor attendance. So this is, has been going on, but has, we haven't.
So is it the same, is this the same for all schools in our school district? And is it in everyone's handbook?
And that can.
Okay. I think if if it's the same and it's in every school, it would be advantageous. Because even even I'm like, how many can I excuse, you know? Am I there? And then, you know, I even got a letter from the girl at La Plata. I'm like, I have never gotten one of these. So obviously, I forgot to excuse him. I mean, so it's just helpful, just remind reminders and at every level. Because by the time they're sophomores, you should probably know this by now, right? So I would like to see that in every handbook if it is not already. I don't know. I know you guys need these approved for next month, which we don't have another board meeting to approve them before that.
I can, we can put it approved on that contingency.
Okay.
Put that in there.
Okay. Perfect. Dr. Diaz, go ahead.
I am, there is like a statewide push for C Y F D involvement on a number of levels. So maybe I'm hypersensitive to this topic right now. But before there's a C Y F D referral, there's a discussion with administration and parents to decide if that's necessary, right? There's that collaboration and communication. And then if there's a concern about those being unjust, like.
Beyond that meeting, after that meeting, if there are still concerns after that, that's where the C Y F D.
But it doesn't say, like, if there continue to be absences after that, it's C Y F D referral. It says something like at the discretion of the administrator, right?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that verbiage is there because.
Is there a law in the state of New Mexico, though, that says after? Yes.
We have to go ahead and do a.
I know. There is a, just a standard state requirement, correct? After so many, you have to report?
That has to be in there, yes, ma'am.
Is it ten?
That, and that's once you hit the ten excuse.
You have to report this C Y F D.
Interesting.
Just for clarity. We keep moving.
Please.
Okay. Um, and then we've got the school, the telephone use, which is gonna be basically what we're doing everywhere, right? Request permission. Okay, wellness room. Okay, sorry, I was going through all of them all at the same time. So wellness room, there's a reason this needs to be in there. Is that what I understood? I'm okay with it, but what was the point?
It can just notify the parents that this is also part of our attendance, uh, program where we're trying to get students that are having some anxiety about coming to school. We want to go ahead and inform the parents that, hey, you know, they're having a hard time. We do have a wellness room, so there's somebody that they can visit with. Uh, we are looking for it to actually boost our attendance. Uh, and that's something that we've talked about in in the past. In in one of our schools, we have been able to go ahead and see an increase in attendance. It's hard to say that that's exactly because of the wellness rooms, but I definitely feel that they've had a very, very positive impact. Because when kids are have that anxiety level, then they can go ahead and, I don't want to go to school. Well, let's give it a try, young man, and and if you're having a hard time, you can go to the wellness rooms and talk to someone. And so that's something that we've we've told parents, and so they wanted to include that into their.
So the intent is just to inform parents of resources available within the school? Okay, there was no, okay. Thank you.
It's a documentation opportunity for the Attentive for Success Act and showing how we're positively taking steps to promote students, encouraging them to come to school, and the resources available to them.
Yeah. And I guess my question would just be, you know, with all of this stuff, it would be helpful in all handbooks? Like, I know she's going above and beyond, right? But I I do think all of this stuff is good in in all handbooks. Um, obviously, there's no lockers at the high school, but, um, sorry, guys.
You're good.
It's a lot of information, I know.
And I appreciate the highlights, because otherwise we wouldn't know what changed from one to the other. All right, any other questions on handbooks? Or the direction we should go on that cell phone policy from the board? All right, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think we got it. All right, next up, uh, Associate Superintendent, Mrs. Cindy Barris.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Hawkins, admin, friends, guests, everybody, and the seventeen people online. So, um.
We're so boring.
I am, sorry.
No, we're so boring, not you.
They all dropped just two seconds ago. So unfortunately, I don't have great news to share right now. But what I can share, this is the first time I've ever reported anything under two thousand. But what I can share is.
Wait, is that like for the upcoming school year?
That's right now.
Okay, my son's not registered yet, so we'll get.
So this is what we're gonna say.
We'll get there.
This is what I'm gonna say.
I'm so bad. My husband's like, have you done this yet? I'm like, no.
So that's that's the piece, and I'm super glad you said that, because that's why. Because sometimes there's a misunderstanding that all of those rolled, and then, oh, my gosh, a hundred and fifty-four are less than last year. But they don't actually just roll, and the numbers don't stay in there. Because you have to go through a process to re-enroll.
I'm I'm hoping that I enrolled my sons. No, when you say that.
They've sent many reminders, so it's not on our side.
I kind of think that that's done, knowing that's that. Because it's your life.
Well, we hope there's a hundred and fifty others just like myself.
Hundred and fifty-four. So what I can tell you, in May, we were at twenty-two oh one. In June, because then school had ended, we were at twenty-sixty-eight. And so when I do the numbers, you know, bless Lisa's heart, she's she's really always waiting on me, and I'm sorry. So she was getting that, and I was getting that to her on Friday. And so when I did that, it was at nineteen fifty-six, which is what you see in your board book. And then today, while we were sitting here, I just looked at it again. So we're up to nineteen sixty-nine. So that's higher, so I have some great hopes. I just have never typed one thousand before.
What is our kindergarten looking like? Does it look like everybody's registered?
No. And pre K either. If you take away the pre K, I'm I'm looking at fourteen right now. And so if you're looking at Kinder.
It's down fifty.
Yes.
Yep.
And so that's what we're looking at. And oftentimes, and we've seen it, oftentimes, they just show up at the school with their kids on the first day. And so we had a secretaries meeting today, and all of those wonderful people in that room know that, and they do a, an amazing job handling it, because it happens every year at every school. Um, so for my numbers, I hope it's a lot. For them, I hate to say I hope it's a lot, because it's it's gonna be busy. Um, but that that's what we're looking at. And so anybody who's listening, if you have not, or anybody who goes to the recording, if you have not done the enrollment for your student, please do so. If you have any questions on that, you can contact any one of the schools or Asia Ellis handles enrollment for all of us.
Well, and it's super, I mean, I don't know how many years ago Ben transitioned to the online, where we're not sending packets home on the first day, and parents aren't signing ten, thirty, forty pages. So it's super easy and convenient. I have no excuses, none, zero, except I just haven't gotten to it.
Parents are busy, we're gonna say that.
But it's, yeah, it's easy. You should have a link. You should have a code. It's, you do it all online. It's awesome. It is awesome.
Absolutely, so.
We'll get that done.
That's what we're hopeful for. So I look forward to typing two again, or having it auto calculate two again when I report again in August.
Yes, everybody get registered.
Um.
We're gonna say that that was just inaccurate.
Absolutely. And and it is, you know, it it really is, because Asia had some of that she was going through with with paperwork she was dealing with. She was showing that that today. So when she was showing that this morning, I know it's inaccurate still. Yeah, that's.
Not okay.
No, um, do you have any questions for?
No.
So I don't have any.
And nothing to present on the mental health grant?
I I do want to say one thing.
Please.
Um, we did go, we were in court, in federal court. Never been in federal court. Let's hope you never go. It's a little bit daunting. But I can say, the team that went up there, the leadership of Mr. Hawkins, our amazing attorney, is something I've never seen before. You know, and I've been around the block a minute or two. But without the leadership in the team, it was, when people say, and and I I say things like this, but it's fair to say I would stack that A team up against any other team in the nation. It was amazing. They were incredible, the things that they said, and it really is scary. And the only one that I was worried about, even after, was me. You know, you know, I'm me. So sometimes I throw in a one liner, like my invitation must have got lost in the mail. Said that out loud in federal court. Um, but I could be more proud of the team that represented us. And if you could have been there, you'd have seen it. Words can't do it justice. So I'm grateful to the team that was there, Mr. Hawkins and Andy Sanchez. He did a really good job. We couldn't have asked for a better attorney or team.
Awesome. Thank you for that. All right, Director of Finance, Ms. Michelle McCain, anything for this section?
No.
Okay. Awesome. So Board of Education Finance Subcommittee, let me pull up my note. That keeps us moving quickly. All right, we met last Thursday, regular scheduled, regularly scheduled for, um, Finance Committee, and we reviewed, there was some hot off the press information. People were a little bit nervous about some title budgets on hold. Title one, title two, title three, title four. Um, only a few of those were we affected by, but you guys are looking into those and moving through the the freeze on title.
Yes, so we're title three, title.
Two, three, four.
Two, three, and four. We met with principals today about their direct impacts in our at at the district level and at the campus level. And so we are having to make some adjustments. Um, I think the phrase I use will will be tightening our belts a little, right? As a reflection of that, uh, for however long, if the freeze is permanent, then there'll be some adjustments that we will have to work through. Um, we will make the critical adjustments that we can to make sure that they don't impact, um, student learning immediately. So you take, for example, professional development with title two, with the current freeze, any professional development that we currently had prepared for this current year is on hold. Um, if we were paying certain stipend stipends, um, for mentorship. So it's a requirement for those, for brand new teachers to come in with a, uh, to be mentored. As a district, we've been able to generously, um, pay a nominal, uh, fee for that, uh, uh, for those teacher, to the level three teachers to mentor. Those funds were frozen, and so mentorship stipends are frozen at this time. Um, any, um, payments that also that our private schools also get out of those title funds, their allotment that comes out of title two, um, done. So those are also frozen. Um, as we look at programming needs, um, particular particular software programs that we use for instruction, um, that would have, that would come out of these particular funds, um, those have been frozen. And so the principals have to go back and look at their budgets, um, to see if there's a way to make some adjustments if we can for those. You know, we're we're gonna tighten our budget, our belts. Um, that's what we're asked to do at this time. Um, I wish I could say that this is temporary, but it could very well be permanent. And if so, um, we're gonna do our best to make sure we don't impact learning. But it'll be subtle ripples in the district that we we just won't be able to do. If that's what we're asked to do, if we're asked to not train teachers and provide an opportunity for them to continue to grow and be skilled and learn the latest and greatest, then that's what, unfortunately, at the moment, that's what the federal government is asking us to do. And so that's, that's what you're gonna see. Um, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna go off grip too much, because there's still some things that we have to do. But what I will say is, um, this is the first of several. Um, as I understand it, there are some other conversations that are taking place as we speak at the Public Education Department that's going to impact about three, uh, particular possible positions in our district, um, that are cost, that may be impacted. And so we're what happens at the federal level is impact gets trickles down. So we we are gonna experience the trickle down from the feds down to Silver City as well, as is other districts in our community, but that are in our state. We're gonna make the adjustments, and we're gonna do our best for kids, and we're gonna take care of our staff. So we'll we'll make it work.
Sorry, I know this was finance, but I wanted everyone to, and I couldn't relay the information as well.
Did I misrepresent any of that information?
Okay.
Um, idea B funds that were originally awarded are no longer available due to prior year adjustments that weren't made. So you guys will see that in our bars. They want us to do an adjustment, but that money is not available. Um, bars, there was lots of them, as you see, so we reviewed all of them. And still, at the end of the day, Michelle's team did an amazing job like they always do. And we do see a cash carryover that we will be able to, that she has already figured into our budget to help us get through the next year and.
The majority.
The majority of it, yeah. But, you know, we need to get S B nine back to provide repairs and maintenance expenses. Um, but the good news is, um, we are okay. It's not sustainable. We can't go a whole nother year of this. So we've got to get S B nine funds back. And, um, as part of the discussion that we're having about school consolidation, I like that word much better. Thank you. Um, that will also help us with with our budget. So it's something that, a decision that we have to make to continue to be physically wise and good students.
Um, Madam President, members of the board, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, um, as we look at the impact of the federal freezes, uh, just so I want full transparency, um, summer programming for the upcoming year also directly impacted. And so, you know, our, we've had the opportunity of really taking care of our kids, um, at the elementary level and providing the experience, um, through K six. Right now, with the freeze as it currently stands, um, we will be able to do a bare bones possibly at the high school, because you've got to have credit recovery opportunities. But the opportunity that we had at the elementary that we've done for the last couple of years, that currently is also impacted by the freeze.
Any questions? They won't be for me, but for anyone around. Okay. That is our Finance Committee report. Not not great, but there is some highlights in the fact that we are okay. There are other districts that can't say.
Yes, ma'am.
That. So thank you, Michelle and the team for finding ways to, uh, adjust, pivot, and continue to um, meet the needs as we can. Audit Subcommittee, we did not meet. Um, they are putting out, and the R F P has been resent out. We didn't have anyone, no biters, so they're making phone calls. Um, as you know, we have to rotate off of our current auditor for two years, so we're in the process of finding a new one. Threat Assessment Committee, Mr. McMillan, did they meet?
I believe we had a meeting, no.
Okay, thank you. And then Board President, we're gonna go into our second reading of the New Mexico School Boards Association Policy Advisories. Um, the first two, I'll just read like that. The second one, um, actually, I'll read through all of these, and then whenever we make a motion, whoever makes the motion, could you include which alternative we will be adopting for the use of cell phones and electronic devices? Um, that would be either option, do they word it as option one or alternative?
Alternative one.
Alternative one or two? Yeah. Um, all right, here we go. Second reading of New Mexico School Boards Association Policy Advisories, number two sixty-five, E B C Emergencies. Number two sixty-six, I A, Our Instructional Goals and Objectives. Number two sixty-seven, New J I C J, Use of Cell Phones and Electronic Devices in Schools. New two six, uh, sorry, number two six eight, New J L C E C, Cardiac Emergency Response Plan, Automated External Defibrillators. And number two sixty-nine, New J L I H, Parental Guidance for Water Safety. Do I have a motion to approve these policy advisories? Mr. Hawkins, hold on just a second.
Now, be clear, so you're looking at alternative one or alternative two?
Correct.
Alternative one, um, also, both of these will work. Alternative one aligns with what you did last year. So last year, you delegated authority to the campus principals when they when they implemented the policy at the high school. Alternative two reaffirms your commitment as a board to say that's what you want to do. If you want to stay in line with what you did already, they both work. Alternative one is already kind of what you did this past year. I'll make sure that I cleared that up. Because last year at the high school, when they made that decision, they brought that to the board, and you approved that recommendation from the board. Did that make sense?
Yes, but I thought it was alternative two. So where's the diff, where does it deviate?
They both do the same thing. I just want to make sure that I articulate that that's what one did, right? So when you read the first part of our policy, one says, school principals with the approval of the superintendent and in compliance with the board policy regulations, right? And that goes into that language. When you look at alternative two, it starts off, the school board prohibits the use of wireless communication devices. So both ultimately do the same thing. One is where pretty much lines what you did last year.
Okay.
Does that makes, does that make sense?
Yeah, all you, yeah.
And I want to make sure that I.
Are you, it's two. Is it right?
They're, they're spinning here, they're both the same.
Madam President, it's like spinning here, that the policies are very, very identical.
They are.
Verbiage is just.
Rearrange.
Yeah, rearrange.
So, Mr. McMillan, you said one uses the word prohibited, and the other one doesn't?
Two does. Two, because to me, seem to be a little bit more kind of firm in the commitment that we're prohibiting the use with a few exceptions, but I mean, the same exceptions are in the other policy.
They're all the exact same language.
Just you use is less restrictive verbiage, potentially?
The format is just different.
Format's different.
Okay, well, whoever makes the motion gets to choose the. Mike? Yeah, let's, yeah. I open the floor.
To to touch on some of the other policies a little bit, if I could maybe quiz Mr. Hawkins. Mr. Hawkins or administration, I think. The two sixty five emergencies, I think that's something that's already covered in in most of our schools with. Uh with just uh emergency response and A E Ds, I think that's just an an add to. An additional other emergencies, cuz we, there's weather, there's active shooter, there's all these others. And I think that that was an add there.
Yes, sir.
Um so I think we're we're good there, the question I have, I guess, is really on two, number two sixty nine. Water safety, that was one that was. Debated, I think, a bit in the legislature, and it was interesting that it made it through, but how do we? How do we propose we're gonna meet that? That policy, and I think it for for parents, I mean, from what I understand, it could be as something as simple as. Hey, the flyer was sent home for parents to to have on on file.
It would have to be adopted that we'd add to our handbook. We could send it out and we would probably this first year send it out independently. To be in compliance with the new policy and then going the next year, because this is just not being adopted. We'd incorporate uh information regarding that in the handbooks.
Okay.
So there just happens to be a swim school going to happen in August at the public pool. That they're gonna have, um and they're specifically trying to target kids age five to. Obviously, our population for the kids that don't normally come to swim lessons. So um get with Dixine Moore, Mrs. Moore. Um as rela- as well as Randy Billings, she mentioned it to me at swim lessons last week. We could send that out.
In the summer, right, first, we could send that in May.
Mm-hmm, and I I mean, again, there's only gonna be, you know, so many spots. But if you also integrate, you know, water safety and this availability. And depending on how much, how many people show up, they could potentially see more, but that is a great opportunity to get this out. To be and then be compliant, and something it seemed like they really wanted to do going forward. So that's an that's an option.
Yes, yes, ma'am, but we could send out a flyer, again, like I said, this year to make sure we get it out and then incorporate it into the handbooks. And I, you know, we might even towards the end of the year, maybe look at how we with our parent square notice, kind of how we do our example use policy. Have something there to put that in there, so it's constantly there.
That that's true, it could just be accomplished, I bet, with parent square and and uh those that. Is there an opt out on parent square, a paper flyer for those that that opt out?
I don't know how many people have ever opt out for paper flyers, I I think we rarely ever send out a paper flyer. Um I think most all of our information is there.
Parent square, yeah.
Um I know there's, we don't want more added to the registration process, but like for the bug spray and all those other things, we have to add that and just check the box and. So I don't know if you want that, so the flyer and the registration packet next year.
We can do that, I think, I think you 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 hit touch on a real obvious one, which is because. It happens during the summer here and then in most places, but just like here, the the pool, once the pool is closed, the pool is closed, right? It doesn't necessarily negate water safety, but we typically traditionally think of that during going launching into the summer. So we just wanna make sure that we put that information out right before summer and then.
And one thing I just caught in here, it's in this policy guidance, it says uh. That the that it must be done no later than the tenth day of school. The tenth school day of each school year, which is interesting as well, but.
After the after the pool is closed.
I hear they're staying open the whole month of August, is what I hear. It would, it would.
I'll have to ask the paper to see if they have an article on it. But we'll, on- once approved by the board, we'll. Develop a flyer of information.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I need a a motion. Wait, no, 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 that's just our second reading, sorry, okay, keep on moving, board comments. Well, I have talked a lot tonight, and it's crazy to say the word. Towards the end of July, and I need to get my son registered for high school, but here we are, right? Um it's been a great summer, I hope everybody found some time to rest and get ready for the next year. It it seems like you just wind down into June and then you get ready in July, and so it's gone really fast. Um a few things that I just want to send out are um well wishes and also condolences. Uh to the family of Tason Yost, obviously, get well soon, we're all behind you, fighting for you and. Um really hope that it's going well um for him as he recovers from an incident. And then also our condolences to the family of Mrs. Cook, she will be deeply and dearly missed by our district. Um other than that, I really look forward to the upcoming school year. Um I'm sure teachers and kids are not quite ready, but it's right around the corner. Um and so we know it's gonna be another great week, great year, Dr. Diaz.
Um I just had a couple of things, one is, um I just really wanted to tip my hat to the uh team for our mental health grant and. Um the injunction efforts, um I I wanna be clear that it, you know, this whole situation is really based on the judicial system. And not so much um the merit of our argument, and so we have to go through the appropriate processes. Um and that's left to interpretation by that court system, so um we are by no means defeated. And I think we just come back to the drawing board to decide how we strategically plan moving forward. Um but uh it it doesn't um. Minimize the importance of mental health for our students, and I want people to understand that that is hugely underscored. And I think that's what we're trying to convey um to the federal uh powers that be. Um that when we put the boots on the ground, it is impacting our youth and their ability to learn. So I just wanna make sure people understand that is still hugely important to us, and we have not, eh you know. We are not gonna um just let it lie, that's really important. Um the other thing, definitely condolences uh to Ms. Cook's family, she's gonna be sorely missed, uh she was one of the most giving people. Um and kindest people that we knew and definitely uh set the example for all of us, so. Um definitely um heartfelt condolences, but also just grateful to have known her. And she touched a lot of people. Um and then um I just, my only um request would be that. We are not having any changes this school year as far as physical location of where your kids will go. Um as far as, you know, the calendar is out, everyone sees that, um so the changes we're speaking to are twenty six, twenty seven, the only. Only exception to that is the time, and so I think we can send that out maybe on parent square.
I'll post it on our website, Madam Vice President, Madam President of the board, yes, ma'am, I apologize, we'll put that on the website, we'll put it out in parent square. And then um I'll probably wear a T-shirt for we can still walking around town with the advanced schedule.
Your time is appreciated. And so um and then um I think all um local spots, we're gonna make sure that our parent square stuff is up. For, you know, if you have to report an excuse for a kid, that you'll be able to utilize that link, cuz sometimes I think it's hit or miss. But I really appreciate our secretarial staff and our administrative staff, they're very approachable and happy to help. Is it it's about communication, right, so as frustrating as it can be with all the other entities. And I think everybody has good intentions, even these rules and things, so just try to communicate, and I think that will take care of any concerns. Um and um just good luck with the new year.
Thank you, Dr. Diaz.
I just wanna thank the administration staff that scared myself there, that's not phenomenal, but. Uh I just wanna thank those that continue working, that don't take a summer break off. Um and just carry and 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 come and just keep the blood flow going through the district, you know, thank you. It's also nice to see, you know, students being active, like at the Fourth of July Parade, you know, the band, the cheerleaders. You know, it it it's still good to see that and 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 see our students out there with, you know, our the the coaches, sponsors. Out there keeping them busy, so that's, thank you. The the summer just came and went, but I just wish everybody, you know, enjoy the rest of your summer and. Um again, the condolences to Mrs. Cook, you know, one funny story really quick is my al- our eldest, my eldest. You know, she was her kindergarten teacher at Harrison, and it was so hard for my wife and I to let our daughter just go. And finally, she just had to say, you know, she had that gift to talk to parents and and students to say she's gonna be okay. And leave really nicely, you know, but you know, her classroom was always open and, you know, she was. Just a a phenomenal person, and that's what I will leave it to.
Thank you, Mr. Con, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, um you know, the as summer wraps up, I think uh we we have, of course, had a number of challenges. One, I think, starting with the, of course, the fires and folks having to evacuate it all, and it's. Nice to see the schools was able to able to support the the firefighters and their efforts to to control that. And of course, went through some moments of sadness, losing a staff member. And and other challenges with the students currently battling the the injuries, a student from Cliff. Um and then to to um have a moment of celebration here this this last week. We had the ribbon cutting for the rec center, so it was exciting to see that opening up. And will be another point uh for our spot for our students to to gather and hopefully. Um celebrate um what the community has done, cuz the community's always come together in each situation, whether it's the fire. Uh losing our um Mrs. Cook and our student, Mr. Yost's community, and the schools always come together. Uh during times of of challenge and trial, and it's it's good to to be a part of of the school community and this community. Where we support each other and and celebrate each other and um the the. This next time we meet in August, the school will already be almost a month underway, and so the countdown. Begins, we already got the graduation date set. And the countdown is on, so um enjoy what's left of the the summer break and uh we're off and running, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Alright, so we have open public comment. Did you receive anything, and neither did I? For our action items, the consent agenda, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Michelle McCain.
Alright, well, good evening, everybody, um we have quite a few things on our um consent agenda this evening. I'll start out with our checks written in June, um extremely large amount, but keep in mind, we pay out our contracts for the summer. Um we have checks written in the month of June totaling seven million nine hundred ninety one thousand eight hundred fifty seven dollars and six cents. Um we have um budget adjustment requests, I have um several of them. Two of them are unusual in that they impact last year's budget. Um we had, we're awarded carryover funds for um idea B and idea B preschool. And so even though we don't have access to those funds, we have to get them on the books for um head so that. Whatever they need for that to happen can happen. And so um the first two um bars that I have, the budget adjustment request, is the final award and carryover for um idea B. In the amount of twenty seven thousand four hundred and forty five dollars. And then for idea B preschool for last year's budget of two thousand seven hundred and fifty two dollars. Then I have some other um what we call maintenance bars, where it is not an increase or a decrease to the budget, but mainly moving um funds around. Um what we had, um they didn't really come out and and say it completely last, um when we started the year. Is the nine ten B five is the funding formula for um the S E G, that tells us how much um operational revenue we're gonna get. And there's different um pockets of revenue, we have our sped dollars, and so those have to be budgeted on sped activities. Teachers, um teacher salaries, ancillary staff and all of those things, we have, and now they have broken out gifted from the sped budget. Um and so now we have gifted dollars that are generated, and we have to spend those on kit, um the gifted students in our population. And so um we also have our at-risk dollars that operate the same way. When um the nine ten B five generates at-risk dollars, they have to then be budgeted on at-risk expenditures. And so in um my initial budget for um the operational budget, I had all of those things in my budget. But not coded as such, and so that's what I'm gonna go back and do is code those, um we'll have our um like for at-risk. We're gonna be um looking at our C T E teachers. Because part of at-risk is providing different opportunities for the students to keep them engaged so that they stay in school. And so we will move the C T E teachers into the at-risk for um part of the revenue. So that that money, that will then be balanced, because they approved my budget tentatively saying, as long as you have these bars in the new year. And so that's what I'm doing is moving those dollars to be spent on those pro- um programs. And so that's what um the operation, the third bar is moving budget to align with the at-risk revenue. The fourth bar is moving um budget to align with the gifted revenue that was generated by the nine ten B five, and that will fix those. And now um the next bar that I have, I think will be um something that you'll be hearing from me this year that you haven't heard from me in the past. Because we had an S B nine budget to work with, but now that we're having to um budget maintenance expenditures out of our operational budget. I'm going to have to be moving money into um the maintenance budget, because we didn't just have spare S B nine money sitting around. And so we have to move money from different allocations into our maintenance budget as we need it. And so um in order to have maintenance supplies for, um I was really good, I got him uh the. It was maintenance or repairs buildings, I got that covered, and I got um the maintenance or repairs of vehicles covered. The supplies I didn't get covered, and so those will have to move um budget into the maintenance budget. So that they can buy supplies, so that they can fix all of our equipment and buildings as we go along. Um the next bar that I'm um asking for approval for is, um we have our. Um Department of Justice Cops Grant that we were awarded five hundred thousand. Unfortunately, it's gonna cost more than the five hundred thousand to do the access control, and so Ben has budgeted in his H B thirty three budget. Um some funds to help us complete that project. And so I'm moving funds in the H B thirty three budget to align with the expenditures for the um cops grant. Not covered by the initial five hundred thousand dollars. Then um we have our Department of Health Mental um Health Grant, we were um awarded the last one point one nine seven five million. In January, which was our old fiscal year, and so we're gonna have to carry over um the the remainder of that. For the um to get us through to um December thirty first, when we will no longer have access to our mental health funds. The amount that we're carrying over is six hundred and five thousand two hundred and four dollars and seventy four cents. Um then we have um additional funds that we were awarded um last year through Representative DeRazas. Um some funding for um, it was for our Cliff baseball field, there was money set aside, and then we had some fine arts funding. When I initially had my budget set and ready to go for um this year. Um over the weekend, my um budget disappeared for this grant, and so I was concerned that they were taking it completely. But I finally rattled enough cages and got somebody to respond to me, and they said to go ahead and put it in, they just, it was something they were doing on their side of things. And so we have access to those funds, what we are gonna do, considering the way things are going now, is to be be very quick about spending them. So that we know that we will have the use that we want of those funds, and so we will get on that. The very next um bar that I have is my Department of um Justice Cops Grant Award. I also had to add that in after the initial budget was approved, and so we have our five hundred thousand dollars going towards our access control. For um security for our school sites. Um we were awarded um a couple of new grants, and and they're um really brand new with the state of New Mexico. Comprehensive literacy development grants, um we have one for supplies and curriculum, and then we had a separate award. That was for the first three months of our new um two coaches and coordinator salaries. So the very first award that I have here is the um the literacy curriculum and and supply. Is gonna be the three hundred and seven thousand three hundred and seven dollars. And then we have our um the comprehensive literacy development grant that is the salaries and and benefits portion. The first quarter of the grant, we received a hundred and twenty one thousand. The first quarter of the grant, we received a hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and seven dollars and seventy-five cents. And that was for one um literacy coordinator and two literacy coaches. And then people transportation. We have um two of our bus contractors that each bought two new buses. And um we had Tina Montoya who bought her two buses last year, but just received funding for it this year. And then we have Cliff Bus Lines, who is finishing up the purchasing of the two buses. And so for those, we have to budget in the rental fees that flow through us directly to the contractors. And that is what the hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars is, are the bus rental fees for those four buses. And then um my final bar that I'm asking for approval um this evening is our Go Bond building. Um, I just have to um reallocate the 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 budget in there to align with the expenditures that we have that are um upcoming right now. And so it's just movement of money. It's not moving, adding to or subtracting from that budget, just moving it around so that it can be spent appropriately. And so those are all my bars. And then I have, um, we had one RFP this um, this month. We had um, it was uh our student nutrition um management company. And we had uh two uh companies that participated. And we um are, after the RFP, um we went through the RFP process. We have Southwest Food Service, who will receive the award of our RFP with your approval tonight. And then um yay, very end, we have lots of donations from our community. Um, we have from Gateway Apartments, five hundred dollars for Silver High Boys Basketball. For Mastercraft Metals, we have five hundred dollars for Silver High Boys Basketball. From Ace Hardware, we have seven hundred and fifty dollars for Silver High Boys Basketball. Silver City Hardware has seven hundred and fifty dollars for Silver High Boys Basketball. McDonald's had one thousand dollars for um Lady Cult Soccer. And we have um fifteen hundred dollars from the Moose Lodge seventeen eighteen for um Silver High Boys Basketball. And Beck Family Dental has um, wow, um, sorry, has donated five thousand dollars for the Lady Cult Soccer. And so for all of these donations, for these budget adjustment requests, and for our RFP, I ask for your approval tonight.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions or do you want me to speak about the RFP?
You'd like to?
So the RFP is for the new, so we did an RFP. At the end of the contract year, our director of the Fisher Services announced her retirement. Um, and it was an opportunity um to continue what she started in improving the quality experience of our food nutrition. And so what we wanted to make sure we did when she announced her retirement is that we could look at our options to improve food quality, student engagement, and also improve the experience in our cafeteria. Um, you know, over the last several years, we've had community input. Um, you've had conversations with students and this community about what we can do. And you've asked us, how can we improve the experience? And so which led us to put out this RFP to look at options to improve the experience and quality of food. Um, we've been evaluating the quality of food service programs. How do we make better meals? How do we ensure that we can upgrade the facilities and experience space, experience as well? And so when we looked at those options in the RFP, was put out, we, the RFP that was selected, SFE met the expectations. They um have worked within the state. I believe they have eleven districts, um including Rio Rancho and Lordsburg, that they they manage um as far as the experience. So what we hope to see um is um significantly more scratch cooking. Um, in our, throughout our kitchens, we met with our nutritional service staff today. They seem to be really interested and excited about that. And we were able to talk about reassuring that our current staff um will continue to be employed under the supervision of the food, the Southwest Food, uh Southwest Food Excellence, that's right, SFE.
She has on here Southwest Food Service.
Service, maybe I threw in that.
They're excellent.
Excellent. But with the board's approval or acceptance of that, um we will begin the process of significantly taking a step in a different direction and improving the quality. And so we're hoping that our students and parents um are able to see and experience um a a a different feel in our cafeterias. I'm excited for it. Um, just because I know that there's been questions. I believe that our our current food nutrition staff has done a wonderful job um preparing the food, whether it's pizza, prosciutto. They do a great job of taking care of our kids. And I believe the chef experience and the cafeteria experience that SFE brings will significantly enhance and improve the quality and experience our students are having.
Any questions about the RFP?
They can cater our first board meeting next month.
Maybe so. Yeah, all of the board members are really excited about it. We were able to, um, they are who catered. I don't know if yous catered or served the Region Eight meeting in Lordsburg back in whatever month it was. It would have been this year.
April.
April. Um, and it was phenomenal. So we are really, really excited for everyone to get to experience it. Um, we didn't know that we would have this opportunity so quickly. I brought home a card to Mr. Rockets. I said, just file this away for when you need it. Um, and then that opportunity came around pretty quickly, so we're, the board members are really excited. So if you guys could just find out how we get punch cards. You know, I mean, we'll, we will pay for our meals, but I'm sure all the board members are really looking forward to getting to go and then enjoy a meal um at our schools with our kids. So, thank you for that. We're excited. And thank you to all of our food service people who are ready and willing to jump on board and just join us in this endeavor. And um, parents, get ready. Your kids are not gonna eat sack lunches every day. So, all right, um, I think we're ready to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Khan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McMillan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you so much. Mr. Antonio Undesola, Director of Transportation and Maintenance, I assume you have something for us since you've lasted this long.
Members of the board, uh today I'm asking for your approval for the revisions to two of our food service contracts. Um, one of them being for Cliff Schools, as Michelle mentioned previously. Um, our two of our buses for Cliff Schools came in. So we have some rental fees that we needed to make some adjustments on the contract for. So we did go ahead and add those um rental fees onto the contract.
So it's just the rental fees, that's the only thing that revised the contracts, was just the rental fees on both of them?
Is the rental fees and then on the Montoya contract, it's the language regarding the rental fees. Um, and it just gives them the option to either take the rental fee upfront or to break it into the twelve months.
Okay. Awesome. Any other questions for, because we had approved these and then this like, we're reapproving. Okay, okay. Sounds good. Question? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll get those approved for you. All right, item eight, consideration approval of Silver High School class of twenty twenty-six. Graduation date, Friday, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Diaz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan. Any discussion? Let the countdown begin, right, Mr. McMillan?
Begin, yep.
Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Consideration approval of Cliff High School, class of twenty twenty-six, graduation date of May fifteenth. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Diaz. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Mr. McMillan. Any discussion?
I have just a quick question. Someone has cross-checked these for activities, conflicts, that, okay. Just making.
Okay, and Cliff's is even one week earlier?
There's is always a little bit earlier because of their qualifications, mosque, so. Yeah.
Yeah, you're. The track meet should be the week before. Okay.
Because ours would be the week of Cliff's graduation and then.
Is right there, yeah. And then the last day of school is what? Next, the next?
The next Friday, after Memorial Day, or, yeah.
After Memorial Day, yes.
So, May twenty-ninth. Uh, do we have, did we have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Consideration approval of the second reading of the New Mexico School Boards Association Policy Advisors two sixty-five through two sixty-nine. And for policy number two sixty-seven, I believe. Someone correct me if I'm wrong. Where is it? We need, we need a designation of the alternative we intend to adopt. Open the floor for a motion.
Madam President, uh, motion to approve the second reading of the policies presented with uh policy alternative number one for policy number two sixty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Who won? Second by Dr. Diaz. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Consideration approval of the revised Cliff Bus Line contracts to include rental fees. Um, and it looks like we should add Montoya Transportation as well, correct? Okay, so it needs to be consideration approval of revised Cliff Bus Lines and Montoya.
Transportation contracts is what it has in there. Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Diaz. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Another opportunity for open public comment, which I have not received. Thank you. And then future meetings and proposed agenda items. Our New Mexico School Boards Association twenty twenty-five annual convention is December sixth through the eighth in Albuquerque. Please let Lisa know at your earliest convenience if you plan on attending. District events, as we mentioned, school is right around the corner. New employee orientation is gonna be July twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. Welcome Back Staff Event at the Convention Center, July thirtieth. Is that still?
It's gonna be a barn burner, if ever there was one.
I figured.
At the Convention Center, we have Cory coming in. Our focus will be on literacy, so she's really good. Get us on the right, set us on the right back.
If you're not familiar with the name, he comes to us from Atlanta, Georgia, and the Ron Clark Academy. So if you're available, show up. What's the times?
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty on the thirtieth. Okay.
Eleven-thirty.
And then staff development and service on the thirty-first, a swim pool staff-student event, August first and second.
So I had to make some adjustments with our budget, um, so it's on August the first.
The first.
Second, so I'll I'll have to update our flyer that I sent out. So again.
Yes.
Being dutiful about budgets, so we uh went to one day and not two. And the DJ was generous, though, and he had cut his salary because he wanted to make sure that the kids had music.
Awesome.
DJ Defa.
Define.
Defa?
Just like one word, not define. Put it together. Get rid of this place. Um, so everyone's first day of school is August fourth. And Silver Scholars will start August seventh. So again, we, the board, wish everybody a great back to school. And we're looking forward to what twenty-six and twenty-seven brings us. Um, executive session, the board may elect to go into executive session for reasons permitted in the New Mexico Open Meetings back to NMSA nineteen seventy-eight subsection ten dash fifteen dash one, H one through nine. Do you wanna go talk about any of the legal? Okay, yep. So uh, motion to go into closed, quick.
Motion.
I didn't mean to say quick. Um, motion by Mr. Khan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Diaz. Patrick, will you please do a roll call?
Mrs. Montenegro?
Yes.
Dr. Diaz, myself, yes, Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
And Mrs. Clement.
Thank you. We will be going into close at seven fifty-eight.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Patrick, will you do a roll call?
Mrs. Montenegro.
Yes.
Dr. Diaz.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
And Mrs. Clement.
We are out of closed session at 9:38. No motion was taken?
No action.
No action was taken. And motion to adjourn. Motion. Motion by Dr. Diaz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan.